All ready to get it going?
Yeah, I made it in.
You did make it. Good job.
Yeah, it's just hard when you look so close.
It is, yeah. Welcome to the specially called July 2022 meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternate participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff or forwarded to the commission directly. This time introduce our staff. Ashley Kreitz, Executive Director. Mike Garner, Associate City Engineer. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. There are nine members of Planning and Zoning Commission, all of whom are appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the city council representative who is appointed by the city council. I ask that the commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation, beginning with Mr. Rumsey.
Steven Rumsey, Business Owner.
Dina Prince, Attorney.
Stella Hare, Finance.
Anne Hornsby, Attorney.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Bill Wright, Business Owner. There are signup sheets outside for public comment. Do not sign up, you will still be given an opportunity to speak. Those wishing to comment on the proposed code updates have been notified staff in advance of the meeting, and you will be provided the opportunity for a marks during the public comment portion of the agenda. Those participating virtually or written comment have been notified staff and be introduced prior to providing comment or having their comments read into the record. The commission will take up items or the agenda. The commission will receive a presentation from staff regarding proposed zoning text changes for the articles identified for discussion. The commission will vote to recommend or not recommend these amendments. Note that the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body for zoning text and zoning map changes. The city council is the final authority. After the staff presentation, the floor will be open for public comment. Individuals wishing to express support or opposition will be given two to three minutes to speak. Only the Planning and Zoning Commission can grant a specified time extension to an individual. We will begin with those parties in person tonight, followed by those participating virtually. In short term for comments, staff introduce you to the commission to provide your remarks. Those who have provided written comments will have those read into the record by staff. Public comment will be received, the floor closed to public comment, and the commission will open discussion among themselves, preserving the opportunity to vote to accept or reject any proposed changes for final consideration at the review meetings that will take place in 2023. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction regarding zoning text amendments, Sections 11-52-76 of the Code of Alabama states, "The legislative body of such municipality shall provide for the manner in which such regulations and restrictions and the boundaries of such district shall be determined, established, and enforced from time to time, amended, supplemented, or changed, and may adopt such ordinance as may be necessary to carry into effect and make effective provisions of this article." The Planning and Zoning Commission services recommended by to the legislative body. While the zoning text amendments will be considered in pieces, they will not be enforced until the full zoning text is adopted and the zoning map changes implemented. In layman's terms, if there is a vote at any point to recommend changes, they will not be enforced on any property until the city council adopts the zoning text and zoning map changes formally through many public hearings. At this time, I'll ask, do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest or possible conflicts or any topics on the agenda for discussion this evening? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, with that, we will begin.
I may have one, but I don't know. I'll just have to see where we go with it.
Fair enough.
Well, and we aren't voting on anything this evening either, commission, so we'll keep that in mind. Mr. Rumsey, thank you, commission. I appreciate y'all this evening, and I know we've got a very light crowd tonight in terms of those of us here in City Hall. So I hope that there are a lot of good folks at home tuning in on Facebook and the city's channel. As always, we like to just remind everybody where we are, what we're doing, what those expectations are. Our steering committee members, please note your role in the process. Planning commission members, I know that y'all received a draft of this about three weeks ago, and you've been able to take a look at it. Just remember to listen, ask questions when you don't understand a question or something from the public commenters. And for everyone watching at home, these meetings will begin at five and end promptly at seven if they are not done beforehand. We will utilize a three-minute timer visible to all parties, and staff will manage the flow of the meeting for efficiencies sake. Let's recall together that this code rewrite process is an ongoing endeavor that will build on itself. We want a code that is going to work or maintain what works today, update what doesn't, make our code more user-friendly, and implement the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So this evening, you'll remember that lakeside living future land use character type. Everything we're talking about tonight is supposed to fit into that lakeside living character type. We're going to redefine or consolidate some existing zones, add new districts. As you've seen, we have three new districts to discuss tonight. We don't have anything very specific to the lake. And then we want to update development standards and our permitted uses. Through this process, of course, we are looking first at the text, and it will build on itself with those purpose, intensity, and dimensional standards that we'll be discussing tonight, development standards, and finally, we'll wrap up with use standards at the end of this process before we go to change the colors on our map. So of course, we are within the zoning code. We're mostly dealing today in that Section 4, our zoning districts. And it establishes the more than 30 zoning districts that will regulate land use and development. We are, again, tonight, looking at our lake districts. That lake residential, lake multifamily, and lake commercial. So as we jump in this evening, we've got, as feedback from our stakeholder meetings leading up to tonight's meeting, we've got some general feedback to have for our notes for all zoning districts, basically, and things that we need to take back to our consultants, but we wanted to mention to you as well. The first identified piece was that there needs to be some building material standards established for all of the zoning districts, all three of them. The lake is so special, and having building material standards that are easily applied and the things that we know today would be more than appropriate. And you saw within the lake multifamily, that call for windows that face the lakeside, things of that nature, to really increase the quality of development around Lake Tuscaloosa. The second item was to clarify whether the zoning districts would apply to land that actually touches and abuts the lake or whether it's everything that's designated within that lakeside living character type. That was a question that came up when we gathered the lake subcommittee back up, and it had been a couple of years since we'd gotten to visit with that group. But they wanted to know, is it everything in that character type or not? That's a fair question. We want to clarify that lot width is measured from the front minimum building line and clarify that height is to be measured in stories instead of feet for all three of these zoning districts because of the topography challenges. And then that vegetative buffers need to be examined and adjusted because of topography challenges around the lake as well. Let's talk really quickly about the vegetative buffer concept, because you saw that within all three zoning districts. Within the additional standards, we begin to codify the concept of vegetative buffer. And we say that some minimum vegetative buffer is to be maintained from the acquisition line on all property that adjoins the lake or reservoir. The permanent structures are prohibited within the buffer except for water-dependent structures like boathouses, piers, gazebos. Of course, Chapter 18 is really going to specify what permanent structures are allowed in the city property on the acquisition side of the lake. We would allow paths for pedestrians, like stairs, golf cart paths, driveways into that buffer, but for the most part, this is supposed to be vegetated. Now, within those stakeholder meetings, the question came up, and it's a fair question, and I will pose it to y'all this evening. What does buffer mean to you? Because in different parts of the lake, as y'all are familiar, that natural vegetation could be just a rock face with a few trees sticking out here and there. Or as you see in the photos, it could be heavily wooded with underbrush in that top photo. Or in the lower photo, you see a little bit more landscaping, a little bit more manicured aspect of a buffer, but it is still, it's sodded with trees. And so we need to discuss what that concept of buffer will mean for this code and for our lakes specifically. We can discuss that later, then. The buffer standards are going to need to be adjusted, as I mentioned, to account for both topography and irregularly shaped lots. One of the concerns that I have in terms of the buffer and codifying buffer is that if you fail to maintain it and you clearcut it, it's just a zoning violation. And when I say it's just a zoning violation, the trees are gone. There are penalty provisions. Due process means that they can technically go to the zoning board of adjustment and have request of variance to not have the buffer. But once the buffer is gone, as we've all seen, especially in that lower photo, it's going to take years for a landscape buffer to grow back if you want trees. If your buffer is trees, then it's going to take years for that to come back. One of the largest things with the buffer situation that you see within the alternative development for the single-family zone, for the multifamily, is that buffers on severely sloped areas are going to start to create a cliff effect, where if you're set too far back from that property line, creating that buffer, you lose any views of the lake, which is part of the reason. It's good that the fly is still here, sorry. Part of the reason that a lot of folks want to be on that lake, it's for those views. So, commission, I guess before we get, would you like to talk about buffer now? Or would you like to talk about buffer towards the end?
I'm interested in buffer now, should we talk about it? Got me thinking a little bit. Sorry. You know, one of the things you said is that's a zoning violation. What kind of, I mean, I know downtown, we have requirements when you do any kind of development, you have certain tree types you can use. And I can't recall if there was a minimum height of those. Is that something we can, I mean?
There's a caliper.
Yeah, within the university area, we require a certain caliber tree.
Four inch or something, was it?
Three, four, at least a minimum of three.
Well, I mean, and those do take, I had to plant those back in '11. Not larger, but it's taken 10, 11 years to get larger. I mean, I'm starting going, my first thought is, it needs to be more of a penalty after that for better to work for. If you clearcutted that, like in the bottom, if they did that intentionally, I think a zoning violation is a slap on the wrist. And there should be some kind of requirement, okay, we have minimum requirements to plant.
There can be a penalty process where they get cited. It's what we do when they cut below the acquisition line, they get a citation, and then they have to put back the same amount that they took away.
Who determines that? I mean, how do you determine that? Is that something?
They measure what the stumps are that's left of what was cut. And they have to, if they've cut a 12-inch tree, then they put back four three-inch trees.
That's what the policy is now?
That's how we handle it. But they get a citation, that starts the process to enforce them.
Have we ever done that?
About 15 to 20 times.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done it quite a few times.
Who enforces that?
Yeah, they're lake inspectors that do it, and it goes to municipal court. And so that works, but...
Okay, so how long does that take, just out of curiosity? What's the, I mean?
Probably about three months before we conclude it.
Is there a way to maybe require some sort of inspection during the process of development to sort of forestall that? I mean, because as you point out, it's obvious, but once it's gone, it's gone. So is there a way to prevent that by putting some kind of intermediate step in?
I think the LDP process.
I think it can be repeated in, whatever is put here would be repeated in the LDP so it would cover the entire lake, not just the part that's zoned.
Let me ask on an LDP, I'm sorry. Like an LDP?
Can you explain that process a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, explain the LDP process.
Well, I was going to say, we've got Mike as the expert.
Yeah, I mean, he tells.
All right. The public understands it, not, we get it. There's two types, generally, for a subdivision that's going to develop on the lake and can create multiple parcels. There's a land development permitting process that is extensive with construction drawings, hydraulic calculations, so on, so forth. But when we get down to the individual lot that we're looking at here, we have what's called a lake's land development permit. Anyone that constructs a house today that touches the acquisition line is required to get that permit. And the application form has a checklist of about five or six items that we look for. We look for the location of the house to make sure that it's, you know, not an encroachment on the property. We look for them to provide BMPs, erosion control measures. Since there is no sanitary sewer around the lake, except in the North River area, the drawing has to identify the 300-foot on-site sewage disposal setback boundary line from the lake. It also has to identify where the septic tank and fill line system will be installed outside of that area. So we get a drawing, an application, and we review it, make sure that it meets that criteria, and then we issue an LDP.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So with architectural technology where it is now, can, is there a process they could actually plot the trees that are currently there and then notify us of what they plan to remove? And then us have like an approval process on that?
Yes, we could add that as a criteria, yes.
That puts the on its own, whoever's developing the land, that they're going to say, okay, here's my current buffer, whatever it may be. And you're required to maintain a certain percentage of that buffer or be able to commit to the, you know, some notification of ones they're required to keep there at a minimum. And then whoever's clearing the lands has, they can flag them and tag them, that, hey, these guys stay.
Yeah, or even a, you know, if a tree is larger than X than it stays.
Something, something.
I mean, that would be, you know, and that...
That's no problem to draft.
Well, and especially the lots adjacent to, like Tuscaloosa, are all required to get an LDP today, so.
Yeah, we, you know, in the process today, we're not analyzing this buffer or the vegetation that's there. The Lakes Division does, I think, a very good job of capturing violations. There's one ongoing right now, it's my first one to deal with, where there were trees cut below the acquisition line. And that landowner has been, you know, made aware of this and is in the process of replacing, just like Jimbo said.
I think one of the problems is sometimes a house gets built, and then they come in and say, I can't see the lake, and they start cutting the trees, maybe six months after the house built, because they can't see the lake. Is there some way you could take out the part that says it couldn't be appealed to the zoning board of adjustment, in that if you cut them, you broke the law? We'll give them a view corridor so that they can limb up and take out selective trees so they can see the lake, have a view corridor, so they're not blocked off. That would be probably something we could put in there. But whatever goes in zoning would also go in the LDP, so it would apply in the county as well as in the corporate limits.
That sounds good.
Who's presenting, okay, the LDP, I mean, that's, to me, whoever's submitting that is probably going to submit more LDPs in the future. So they would be in their, you know, professional standard to follow that LDP.
These are, these are some examples of what I think we don't want to see. But if somebody wanted to develop a lot next door, they get an LDP. It's determined what has to be left, and they could be, if they cut too much, they're going to get a stop work order, they're not going to get a certificate of occupancy. There's a lot of teeth behind it. If they do it later, after you're three years down the road, then it would be more of a citation, and you got to start planting back.
Right.
So, commission, to get us back a little bit onto the zoning side of the house and with the buffer and the land development permit in mind, what we need and what we wanted to work through with y'all as well is, what does that definition of buffer look like? Is it maintaining the natural, you know, the natural vegetation that exists between, on that lot, between the structure and the lake? Whether it be, you know, grass or the understory or, you know, the cliff face? Because if you start removing, especially on a cliff face, you start removing some of those trees, you start to erode what's holding that cliff together, frankly.
Yes, it seems like the trees are really the key, right?
Even the understory can be...
If people want to have a, I mean, a flat area, you know, as a yard that's up above the, or right at their house, or they have a pool, or I don't know what else. But it seems to me that the key is really just sort of maintaining the prior existing tree. But that's just my thought.
So have you had success making, asking or making them plant on hillsides like this? We've, our current ordinances only allow us to deal with what's below the acquisition line. So you're only talking about 10 or 15 feet.
Can you explain, just clarify what the acquisition line is, so everybody's understanding?
That's where the city, that's where the city owns it. It's a pool elevation where the city owns. But depending upon where and the slope and all that, it's usually 10 or 15 feet of somebody's, from part of the lot.
Well, why couldn't we make it, you know, further than the acquisition line? Is there a way to say that you can't cut a tree within X feet of, you know, more than 10 or 15 feet?
Yeah, that's what we're going to be talking about.
It's nothing.
That's what we'll be talking about this evening. You'll hear, we started this discussion with, you know, you will be hearing a lot about vegetative buffers, because as you saw in the packet that you got, you know, the lake multifamily, I believe, is a 75-foot vegetative buffer. The lake residential is a 50-foot vegetative buffer, and that's above the acquisition line. That's on private property.
So one of the things, jumping ahead, is like on some property we have, if you go around the perimeter, on one end of it, there's a 100-foot rock face cliff. And if you went 50 feet up, if you went 50 feet, you would not be on any land where there would be buildings. It's just like this.
Right.
Not unlike that, in a way, only it's rock. And then as you go around, there's some land that if you went 50 to 75 feet, four feet above the acquisition line, it's flat. You might stop anything from happening on six acres. You might nullify the value of several million-dollar lots. Therein lies the issue there, right? I mean, because you could specifically, like on some of those points that are flat, if you get, if you went 75 feet, you could literally get, oh, let's just say a waterfall where they're selling lots at $350,000 for a half acre. If it weren't steep, it could eat up a lot. So you got to be careful about condemning someone's property in a way. Now, if you're just saying, in other words, if you can't cut a tree, you may not be able to build a house. So that's what I say we have to be a little careful of. In other words, the topography and the slope is everything.
Yes, and that's, and even some of those irregularly shaped lots that have a lot of sloughs just intrinsically built into them, we recognize that, you know, in some instances, a 75-foot buffer may completely eliminate the use of a property, and that would be challenging.
Yeah, in particular, on the north end of the lake where it's flat, 75 feet, well, there are houses that are...
Right.
Under...
So what I'm hearing from y'all as a commission, and no, of course, tonight is not the be-all and-all, but what I'm hearing from y'all in terms of buffer is the natural ground cover is important. And then we want to maintain existing trees if we can.
Yeah.
Or as many existing trees as we can.
And I bet there's a formula. I bet, I bet, I bet there's a formula based on the...
Yes, I agree with that, that there's got to be a slope that we can put in.
The number of feet would be altered based on that. And that also goes for things that block other people's view.
I agree with that.
Like the boat, you know, we talked about that with boathouses. If there's an 80-foot rock wall behind your boathouse, and you're not, and the houses have to be built up on the bluff, then it wouldn't matter if someone had a two-story boathouse. But if it's all flat like it is on the north end of the lake, you may be blocking your neighbor's view. So I think the slope is deaky.
Hey, before we leave this about the citation and everything, is there no way that we can put some monetary, like, you know, yeah, you got to put the trees back, but for every tree you cut, you know, you'll pay the city $1,000 or whatever. I don't, I mean, these people that are so, that so flagrantly don't follow the rules, they need to be punished. And putting in a four-caliber tree to replace a 12-caliber tree, in my opinion, is not punishment. Just like you said, Bill, it takes it forever to grow. I mean, we're not, I mean, that's, that's good, but I think, I think we need to look into, is there a monetary penalty that they can pay for?
I'll make a note of that. I'll make a note.
I agree with Ms. Prince. It seems to me like in the past, what I've seen is sometimes we ask forgiveness instead of forgiveness, permission.
Yeah.
And sometimes they'll go in and cut the tree and say, well, I didn't mean to. So then, now they got the opportunity to go for the zoning board of adjustment. Is that what you said, Jimbo?
Yeah, it would be, like, if the vegetative buffer is codified...
But it looks to me like if they've cut it, they broke the law. It's like I said, 100 miles an hour, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. We can get together and give you some different options about what the strongest teeth would be in terms of somebody removing vegetation, either before they get permits or after the fact.
Let me ask one last question, and then we'll move on. But this, like, I'm looking at this bottom lot here on the right-hand side there. Is there a appeals process? Say somebody came in and had wherewithal, wanted to develop that, says, you know what? Those trees are garbage. I mean, there are some trees that just could be, can they have the ability to say, listen, I'm willing to...
With an arborist approval or something along those lines?
Yes, I want to take out these 30 trees, but I'm going to plant something that, like the city does downtown, requires a certain type of tree.
HPC, the District Preservation Commission does that.
Then you can make your lot, you keep it in the tree, buffer in the acquisition, and meet the guidelines we're trying to establish here, give them a chance to make the lot what they want.
I don't see why not.
I mean, there needs to be some...
I just made a note of that. We'll throw that at the consultants and see if they can pretty that up into language that could go in something. Because you're right, you're exactly right. You know, if you've got a, if you're looking at that lot on the bottom, I can see, looking at that, you've got dead trees.
Yeah, dead trees and spruce-looking pine things, and...
Right.
I think they'll at least have the ability to do something like that.
Yeah, and keeping a standing dead tree around is not ultimate, like, granted, the root ball will hold the ground together, but keeping a standing dead tree around for the sake of keeping a standing dead tree is not accomplishing the goals of a vegetative buffer.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, cool, thanks, y'all. I appreciate that.
Yeah, good discussion.
All right, so the first zoning district to talk about this evening is Lake Residential. So this is your single-family residential development around Lake Tuscaloosa, minimizing surface area and protecting the water quality of the lake. There is going to be an alternative development option that we'll talk about briefly that would relax the minimum lot width and setback standards and require a little bit of an additional setback from the lake, but would open up a little bit more density allowed within this district for single families. So it's that pud concept without a putt, as y'all are familiar. You see so many around the lake. So let's take a look at this. For Lake Residential, the minimum lot area you'll see is 20,000 square feet. Minimum lot width is 85 feet, and again, making sure that's at the minimum build line. Minimum lot width is eighty-five feet and again, making sure that's at the minimum build line. Uh, front setback of thirty-five, side of ten, rear is thirty-five. Your setback off the lake is based on the vegetative buffer that we'll discuss here in a second. Uh, and then building height maximum, of course, um, we're using feet in this table, but again, through those feedback meetings, uh, using stories is going to be far more beneficial in this area. Um, what that gives you is about two point two dwelling units per acre and I want you to keep that in the back of your head for a second. Uh, so the alternative development allows for regi- residential development with smaller lots, uh, arranged to provide enhanced open space and protect environmental, recreational and the aesthetic value of Lake Tuscaloosa. Um, we can put them into this alternative development side of the house if they comply with two standards. One is a minimum of thirty percent of the land to be open space and a minimum of a hundred and fifty-foot vegetative buffer. Now, in the stakeholder meetings, that hundred and fifty-foot vegetative buffer was identified as potentially being a bit much, especially based on topography. If you've got a very flat piece of land, that's going to eat up a lot of property versus if you have a severely sloped piece of land. You know, you may not need that much and you've got a cliff. So it is something that we need to take a look at. You kept that two point two dwelling units per acre in the back of your mind. For that alternative development for Lake Residential, um, the maximum density per acre has been increased only to two and a half dwelling units per acre. Um, lot area is none, um, and basically what that says is if it's on a septic system, you know, you've just got to follow, as y'all are very familiar as a, as a commission, the septic regulations, uh, which is a minimum of an acre and you've got to be three hundred feet off of, uh, the septic tank has to be three hundred feet off of the acquisition line. Uh, lot widths you'll see there, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So we made a note through those stakeholder meetings that the density max probably needs to be increased. If we're going to see folks utilizing uh, this alternative development as opposed to doing a planned development, uh, you probably need to see a little bit more than a point three increase in dwelling units per acre. Um, and so three to four would allow a more moderate increase in density. But that is open for, you know, open for discussion.
Well, like uh, the waterfall that I was just mentioning, there are half-acre lots on the lakefront and they sold in, they sold out in fourteen days.
Yeah.
And so it's obviously, and, and so that, that, that's obviously two units per acre right there.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, so the fact that Crown Point, I'm using those as the example, you know, Crown Point went in with larger lots.
Mm-hmm.
And then these lots are probably a third or a fourth the size and they sold. So there's definitely a movement towards smaller, less maintenance. I mean, I think that's an indication of where the market's going.
I agree with that.
People used to like big lots, now they like smaller.
Smaller lots with common space.
I don't even think they advertised. I think, I think they sold a little.
I think you're right. Yeah, smaller lots with common space and absolutely.
And plus it makes it more affordable for people. That's one of the problems is the lake waterfront is so valuable that it cuts out a lot of the people.
Mm-hmm.
So coming up with some creative ways where people can at least have views of water is.
Well, and also so that they don't have to come and ask for a planned unit development also.
Yeah.
Right.
That, that's a benefit after, well, y'all had a quick meeting on Monday. Um, so what do y'all think about increasing that density maximum?
There's no question.
Good idea.
Okay. I'd like to check with y'all. All right, let's move into Lake Multifamily. Uh, so this is land for multifamily residential development near Lake Tuscaloosa. Um, providing vegetative buffer, material standards, protecting water quality of the lake. Um, there could be, as we get into uses, there may be some compatible public civic institutional uses that are put into this zone. Um, today, there are two lots adjacent to Lake Tuscaloosa that abut Lake Tuscaloosa that are zoned multifamily. And that's it. Um, and they are zoned R4 and RMF1. And so right now, what you see is uh, we're looking at a dwelling unit density of six dwelling units per acre. Uh, lot area minimum of three acres. You see a lot width minimum of five hundred feet. Front setback of thirty-five feet, sides of twenty, rear of forty, lake setback, vegetative buffer standards. And then building height of what would be five stories actually, not fifty feet. Um, we do make a note that that six dwelling units per acre is below the current allowable density. Uh, so today, that property that's zoned R4 uh, has a maximum dwelling unit density per acre of fifteen. Uh, the one that is RMF1 is, there is actually no prescribed maximum dwelling unit density for that lot. Um, it is just if you can park it, you can make the parking counts work, um, you can build it. Uh, but RMF2 uh, is twenty-two. So there, there is likely a happy medium that exists that may not be six. Um, but also isn't twenty-two.
Everybody that I speak with says it's all about the design.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not about the unit count, it's about how it looks.
Yeah.
It's like if you put a, what looks like a Hampton Inn on the, on the lake, and they don't, you know, it's all about how it blends in. Nobody cares about how many units, it's whether it looks good.
True.
And that, what's the name of that thing next to Captain's Cabin again we were talking about the other night? Is it Mariners Cove?
You know, it's like five.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was kind of before its time, but nobody even notices it anymore. At the time, it was a big deal. But, but, I mean, so there's five, I don't know how that would, there's probably five units on, well, it's probably a fifteen-acre lot, but the units are probably on one acre.
Right, they're all consolidated in together.
There hadn't been one of those for sale in thirty years, I mean, forever.
That's true.
There is a demand, extraordinary demand. If someone could get a product, and it's actually just getting worse because really everything built up to the lake now is, is a million plus.
Mm-hmm.
There's got to be a way to create a product where, where, where it looks good, blends in with nature, blends in with the environment, with the building materials, architecturally. Legislating taste is very difficult, not impossible, but I think that's where we, where we, where we get into those building materials and architectural standards to the best of our ability. If we can make, you know, if you could have a house that looked like it blended in well, and it, and it, and it was attached units and you really couldn't tell it, and I don't think people would care. It would just offer the opportunity to buy something that might be less than a doggone million dollars.
Yeah. Well, and y'all saw, you had a condo development on Monday night, didn't you?
Why don't we rezone that too? I'm admitting that I've already forgotten what we rezoned it to.
We didn't rezone it.
It's two days ago.
You know.
It was already, it was already zoned?
We didn't rezone it.
The heat we'll take about that is I test drove that after the meeting and I asked somebody what they thought. Everybody, I asked them how many units it was and everybody said a hundred. And I said, no, it's thirty-four.
Ms. Prince, we're, we're going to see that again, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, that's only thirty-four units, but I mean, everybody thought it was a hundred.
True.
It looks like more.
I thi- I think what you want to do is just create a, a, a framework that people can be creative within.
Yes, I, I would agree.
As opposed to dictating architectural standards, you want to give them the freedom to be able to, to use creative.
I don't see y'all wanting to require, everything has a pitched roof, everything has a six-twelve uh, pitch on it, you know, everything is clad in.
And you know that.
Pick a siding. I don't see y'all doing that.
And the thing also, Stephen mentioned earlier, the north part of the lake is totally different than the south part of the lake.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
So you, you have to have that flexibility because you can't, it's not that you can have a, a north, north Lake Residential and south.
Right, it would look different.
Exactly, that would be.
Yeah.
Terrible.
And those, some of those structures were built so long ago, we could have a resurgence of redevelopment up there, maybe in the next ten to twenty years.
That's, obviously that's where it's going to redevelop next, is the north. I mean, yeah, north part.
Okay. Uh, looking at those additional standards, uh, as we talked about, I, I, I mentioned that vegetative buffer was going to, to show up and talk about it. So again, Lake Multifamily says, uh, required a seventy-five foot vegetative buffer from the acquisition line into that private property. Uh, again, permanent structure is being prohibited except water-dependent structures, et cetera. Uh, this is something with topography that we need to relook at and make sure that it is not damaging to properties. Uh, and additionally for Lake Multifamily, uh, we say that building facades facing the lake shall include windows, functional entrances and balconies, verandas, porches or other similar architectural features. Um, and so I think in addition to building material standards, uh, that you see within the Tuscaloosa Forward Zoning and within the University Residential District and what you'll see in downtown, just maintaining those standards uh, that we like, pushing them forward, you'll see a really nice product along the lake. Finally, uh, and this is, uh, one of, I, I feel one of the more exciting districts, uh, is Lake Commercial. And this is a, another brand new thing, but it all came from that lakeside living future, uh, future land use character type. Uh, so this is lake-supporting commercial development and marinas. Uh, those development standards again are designed to implement the lakeside living character type from that plan. Uh, uses are limited to small-scale restaurant, retail and office uses as well as marinas and other ancillary development. So um, it's a, a very limited commercial type. We're not talking about big box stores. And you'll see that here in a second with that ground floor, uh, square foot minimum, or maximum, I'm sorry. So as we look at Lake Commercial, uh, you are looking at a lake frontage width, you need seventy-five feet of shoreline minimum. Um, a front setback of twenty feet because these are mostly going to be things that are fronting the lake, but will have public access. Um, gross floor area of a non-marina use is going to be five thousand square feet. So, taking a look at all of that, again, noting Lake, uh, the Lake Commercial height changes to three and a half stories. Um, but.
Stop there for a second.
Oh, yeah.
What about, uh, is there any kind of parking, if there's?
Yeah, I'm, I'll, we'll get into that in a second. And also, um, so when it comes to parking, know that we will have a meeting down the line where we talk about parking standards based on use. Um, but there are some additional standards for Lake Commercial that have been outlined that we'll go through. Uh, so the Lake Commercial is looking at a fifty-foot vegetative buffer. Uh, that pre-existing vegetation shall be maintained to the maximum extent practicable. Um, and then existing vegetation would be supplemented to meet any standards of this section. Not disturbing vegetation on the lake side of the acquisition line. And then, Mr. Wright, to your questions, all off-street parking areas, waste and recycling storage areas and ground-based HVAC equipment shall be screened from view from the lake and public street, uh, using fence or wall and a combination of shrub and trees. And then additionally, off-street parking spaces provided in excess of the number of parking spaces required. So if you're providing extra parking spaces on your property in addition to what you have to have, remembering that our parking standards are going to change, um, that is going to be done with a pervious surface. We don't want additional asphalt near the lake. We don't want additional runoff on the lake. Uh, so we want to see a pervious surface material, um, that would be maintained with, uh, regular upkeep, whether that's sweeping, vacuuming, repair of surface damage, whatever else to make sure it continues to function and does not push additional water into, uh, Lake Tuscaloosa.
Would, would you, uh, like, say if you had a restaurant there, what's the, the parking requirement on a restaurant in town?
Uh, today, restaurants are one per one hundred square feet, if I remember that correctly.
We have, kind of, keep the same guidelines up there or would be more flexible based on?
So our parking standards generally need to change. They're very restrictive. Um, you know, your nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-two says one parking space per one hundred square feet in a restaurant. Tuscaloosa Forward Zoning says one parking space per three hundred square feet in a restaurant. Um, and so you start to see that change. Again, we'll find that, that balance. Um, but you know, for a, a restaurant on Lake Tuscaloosa, you could see, uh, people going for a date night on a Friday and they're driving in. Uh, because I think what's really cool about Lake Commercial is it's opening up the lake to not just those folks that live on it. Uh, it's, it's providing opportunities for, um, more folks to enjoy this resource that we have while also keeping that lake our water resource, our drinking water resource.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
It's become a culture and people don't think about developing even views.
Yeah.
But we can change that.
Yep, you've got that opportunity. Um.
Even if, even if you were at waterfront, there's some places you could develop, just where you could seawall.
Mm-hmm. It's so true.
We're so used to it just being R1 block, like a blockade.
Yep. Well, and honestly, all of this came from the Lake Subcommittee, that steering committee that are, um, or the subcommittee of the broader steering committee through the framework process. Um, but having the opportunity to not only boat in, if you wanted to boat over to a restaurant, um, but to be able to drive into it as well, I think is just, it's a cool opportunity that this zoning is providing.
We'll encourage, and hopefully we'll encourage, right?
Yes.
That petition we saw Monday night where they said you have to be, you have to live in the development to go to the restaurant, I don't think that's realistic. Uh, I think to be successful in the restaurant, I mean, you need all the customers you can get, don't you?
Totally agree.
I mean, I, I would be surprised if you could be successful with just the people who live at North River or whatever the condition was. But, I mean, he said it, not me. But I bet he'll change it or ask it to be changed.
Possibly.
Does that go in front of the council?
Uh, that planned unit, yes, it's a planned unit development it will. So.
Not just residential.
Well, Commission, really quickly, those were those three residential, or not three residential zones, three new zoning districts to talk about. I want to pu- I'm putting this bug in your ear now. Uh, because our first discussion about the subdivision regulations will be on December seventh of this year. So a Christmas treat for all of you, if you will. Um, you as the planning zoning commission are the final authority on your subdivision regulations as well as their adoption, their amendments, anything like that. You are the final authority. Uh, but the subdivision regulations will have implications and impacts on zoning. So we are going to want these two to kind of walk together. Um, and so we want to talk about our, the first brush with new subdivision regulations and amended subregs will be on December seventh. But from this conversation and from the stakeholder involvement, uh, we may want to start thinking about things uh, like requiring, uh, for new subdivisions, whether they're in any of these zones or even outside of the county, requiring public access, uh, somehow, some way so that you don't have a tier-one lot necessarily. Uh, and then everybody else is a tier-two because they don't touch the lake and don't have access to it because access to the lake has been blocked off. You may want to think about that. Um, and it could be, you know, just public access within that homeowner association, but it's still access to all homeowners within that. Uh, you, we need to start talking and thinking about satellite septic lots and how, uh, and y'all have heard me say over the years, um, they do increase density now. Knowing where the world is, and I, and I sent you that article this morning about, uh, how underdeveloped we are when it comes to housing. And I know that it is strange to think about, um, workforce housing along the lake. And I don't know that we're necessarily thinking about that, but additional housing anywhere opens up housing in other places that could be for workforce. So.
So one, one consideration that I've always wondered about is the septic tank lot.
Mm-hmm.
What do you call them, what you're official?
The satellite lots?
So does that square footage on that lot go toward the total of the one-lot minimum? That's something that we've kind of gone back.
I was going to say, I think where y'all have landed is no.
So, so the lots got to be one acre and then the satellite lots are different?
Yes.
I beg to differ. If that's, that's not what we've been doing, I don't, I do not believe.
That is not where you've landed. That was, last I checked, that's where we have.
Yeah, we've.
And another thing along with that is, it doesn't happen often, but right there at the end of the, south end of the lake where, uh, it's Point Clear Road. You know what I'm talking about? Rolling View's developed. Roland Pugh's development, he has satellite lots and then the city sewer came. And, and one of the owners had a satellite lot that was sitting basically in the front yard of someone else. And he was going to build a house on it because it was, because it met the criteria. It so happened it was in our front yard. Okay, and so we were extorted, so to speak. We had to buy the lot for a lot of money because it met the requirements. You may remember the case, but you know, uh, the satellite lot met the minimum standards of a lot.
Yeah.
So they started to build a, what they said was a house for their mother. We're like, you're kidding, this is a septic tank lot?
And we've, and we've, over the years, because I know that y'all started, the Planning Commission, in the time that I was with y'all, and, and going forward, y'all have really. You have turned the tide a bit on how you've looked at that, especially when it comes to the final plating of satellite lots. Where satellite lots can't be unhooked from the lot that they serve, they are for septic tank use only. Because I remember a case at one point in our lives that they came, they wanted to undo. They, they brought proof from the health department that there was no septic tank on the lot and they wanted to plaid it as a residential lot. I remember that very distinctly and I believe that y'all, as a commission, denied that because it had originally been for that specific property and what if in the future?
Because it looks like green space.
Right.
It's, it's an asset if it's green space.
Yeah.
Somebody can't build a house in, in theory, in your front yard or backyard.
So that'll be something for y'all as we go forward, we've really got to think about how we want to handle satellite septic lots. And I, and I think the times are changing a little bit. And then whether you want to see something like minimum lake frontage requirements for property. Because remember, what we just discussed, that Lake Residential, Lake Multifamily, Lake Commercial, only applies if that property is within the city limits. And so the subdivision regulations are where the, or the lots that are in the county that touch Lake Tuscaloosa, that's where we have that teeth. It's within your subdivision regulations. So just all things to think about as we move forward. And I know that there will be things that we add to this list as we approach December 7th. But just putting that out there as we begin to, begin to crank up the heat.
Can we go back, I wrote something down very early on, we talked about gazebos in there. Can you go back to that one area there that mentioned gazebos and where they could be or where they couldn't be?
Yes, sir.
Because I want to know what define a gazebo.
I'll, I'll define a gazebo.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can define a gazebo.
There's a, I asked that, there's a lot on the lake that someone had, has built, it looks like a gazebo, but it's actually has a bathroom and a bed and a small little kitchen. It's beautiful, I mean, it's on a lot that's very, the terrain is very tough. You know what I'm talking about?
Mm-mm. What?
It's towards the northern part of the lake, but it's a beautiful, it's a little slough, but it's, I mean, he's kind of built a, a structure.
Oh, yeah, in the crevice.
Yeah.
Could you get a picture of that at some time?
It is gorgeous.
Yeah, it's been there a long time.
It has been there a long time, but I'm just, I'm trying to decide, could someone define that as a gazebo and then?
Since we were in Houston.
Huh?
It's been there since we were in Houston.
Yeah, I mean, it's gor, I mean, it's gorgeous.
And, because what I believe.
They park way up on a hill and have a cart path down to it.
Yeah.
It's, it has a beautiful dock and it's more like a little man cave.
I think I actually, in some of the pictures, as I was pulling some of these, I think I've seen it.
It, it's.
But I think that, I agree with you. And I think the definition of gazebo that is intended is the open, open air, you know, Cinderella story gazebo.
I think the wedding crash is where he locked it up.
Also that.
But then we have a, an issue with, didn't the basketball coach want to do something on a, on his dock?
Yes.
He did, and.
He built an accessory structure, which was a boathouse.
Right.
But the main structure never got built.
I just don't want to call it a gazebo. I mean.
I agree.
I think it needs some fun, define the function of a gazebo, what it can and can't be.
That's fair, that's fair.
Anyway.
All right, Commission, as we wrap up, in terms of public comment, I did get one email from Ms. Kelly Fitz. She was very supportive of the vegetative buffer and the ideas that were in it, I let her know, I would let y'all know, so.
No Robert Reynolds in there?
No, Mr. Reynolds, I was, I know, I really thought we'd hear from him.
I'm stunned.
Someone can reach out. Commission, do y'all have any questions for me? I know, we've had, this has been, it has felt a little bit more casual, but I've, I've appreciated that ability to, to have this dialogue this evening. I think it's been really good.
Could we get, can our consultants consult with like, are they, are they official land planners?
Yes.
So, so like, they're used, they understand the density of like a new urbanism or new town, what do you call that?
Tradit, uh, TND development. But no, we'll.
So when you talk about units per acre, I'm not really familiar with how many that might be.
That's fair, and I, um, the flash, like, when you mentioned waterfall, I had in my head, I think they may be at like four dwelling units per acre, four and a half possibly, for the development as a whole. Which still feels fine, so.
Like the lakes, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I think it's the lakes.
You know what I'm talking about, on Pike Road, that they built, they have man-made like 100-acre lakes down there. I think it may be called, no, the waters, the waters? I'm not talking about the lakes and Lake Tuscaloosa.
Oh.
I'm talking about, I think it's the waters, you know what I'm talking about? It's, it's, it's kind of like, it's one of these new urbanism towns like, uh, Duane, uh, Laiden's Island or whatever it would do. That's, you know what I'm talking about? Those, those towns, and, and they've built around, they've built around water. So we may want to look, because they've gone sky high in demand.
That's true.
Something we might, because water is their home.
Yeah.
Now, their topography is probably more like the lake halfway up, it's not steep. But still, they would be a very good. They might, they might learn something from that, maybe we could.
We'll make a note of that and send that over to them to take a look at especially. Commission, we've got, as always, I like to tell you what to look forward to. So August 17th, we will be looking at downtown districts in the riverfront. In September, we get into definitions, non-conformities, a couple more single-family districts, our multifamily districts as well. In October, you've got landscape and buffer standards, off-street parking and loading, lighting standards, some general regs, things like pools, fences, walls, et cetera. On November 2nd, we will look at planned development districts, and I mentioned to you already, December's meeting is subdivision regulations. So as you can see, we're starting to move out of those dimensional standards. We've got two more meetings on dimensional standards. And then we will get, we'll start getting into that nitty-gritty. And so I'll continue to, to send y'all what to look at well ahead of the meeting, three weeks or so, I think, is what we got this time. I was very pleased with myself, but we'll make sure you get it well in advance, stakeholders as well. And as always, I know we've got, and I mentioned this to the council yesterday, but we're not sacrificing doing it right to do it quickly. And I've appreciated the fact that y'all have been so diligent through this entire process. It does not go unnoticed, so, thank you. That's all I've got for you tonight.
You want to go?
Anybody else? You adjourn, thank you.